We'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items we act upon in one motion unless the council member requests an item be removed from discussion in separate actions. Mayor, who would approve a consent agenda?
Okay.
A motion by Councilman Shastin and a second by Councilman Dickerson to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other questions or comments in council? Madam Chair.
That's for Shastin.
Aye.
That's for Basic.
Aye.
That's for Dean.
Aye.
That's for Heath.
Aye.
That's for Brennan.
Aye.
That's for Phil.
Motion carries. We'll move on to comments from the public. Sets and participation be limited to five minutes. Please stand to be recognized and give your address. Ron Smith, question.
Yes, sir. Ron Smith, I live at 711 Lincoln Avenue, Asher First Christian Church here in town in Fifth and Brown. A lot of things going on. I know that the home of the Ministerial Association is gearing up for the community Thanksgiving dinner that's on November 16th. So, a lot of things getting started there. We're also looking to have a high school choir and middle school choir coming to perform there as well as the band of law. So, not yet sure which pastor we're going to ask to present the work, but we're going forward to that. Many other things going on. Our church itself, we just had a free community dinner last night. We served about 30 people. They got free clothing, hygiene, and a full belly. So, that was a blessing. We're also gearing up to work with the middle school to hand out 50 blessing boxes like we've done the past few years. This is the fifth year we're doing this with a partner with the middle school. Students at candy bar sales in middle school will buy cans from Price Chopper, and then the kids will bring in canned goods of corn, green beans, stuffing, and mashed potatoes. And the church will finish out with the boxes. And then the Saturday before Thanksgiving, the church will hand those out to the community. As well, we're also on Thanksgiving Day going to do a free Thanksgiving dinner meal that day too. So, a lot of things going on. Thank you for your support. Thank you for all you do. God bless.
Thank you. All right. I had talked to the guys from Ward Two. There's, I have a little, a few minutes here to present kind of what your names are or what you got going.
Me, the mayor, councilman Brad Riker, and I serve in Ward Rural Water District Number Two. I also own rental property here in Hillsdale, so I understand for a family how water costs affect both residents and landlords. I wanted to clarify a few points tonight. Not to argue, but to make sure we're all working with accurate information and realistic numbers. Clarifying past comments, there are been a lot of discussion online, and I know my frustration came through when I said corrupt. To be clear, what I meant was Rural Water Two proposal was presented to the public with conflated numbers, and that disrepresentation misled me with what we are actually offering. I stand by calling that out. It does as a community deserve transparency. That doesn't mean I'm attacking anyone personally. I'm asking for honesty before, I'm asking for honesty before locking residents in the four years of debt. What Rural Water Two actually offered was, and on October 25th proposal was, it gave us a lot of the regional option that keeps local control while reducing cost. Here's what was included. Pipe line construction between $8 and $11.7 million dollars. Depending on size, and wholesale water rate of 4.5 for your 453 per thousand gallons, which already includes the Hillsdale reservoir storage. No hidden add-ons, and actually Rural Water Two offered to finance interconnect, letting us save its debt capacity and water rights. That's partnership and other people. About Rural Water Two's operation, there was also a lot of talk about Rural Water Two needs Osawatomie and/or the Lids Pike actually unstable. That's simply not true. Rural Water Two has had just two rate adjustments since 1984, the most recent in 2025, and now to reflect infrastructure improvement costs. Our customer base continues to grow from 4,638 meters in 2023 to 4,720 meters in 2025, and our state audit shows healthy operations, full compliance, and long-term stability. We're not looking for a bailout. We're offering a cost-effective regional solution that helps everyone. And then I guess the question is how do you count the question? City has referenced 3 million gallons per day as current usage, but that doesn't add into the math. If you divide 3 million gallons by 2,500 meters, you get 1,200 gallons per meter per day. The average household uses 200 meters per day. Even accounting for schools, businesses, and system losses, the city's actual average daily demand is closer to 1 million gallons per day. So, building a plant that handles 3 million gallons a day means you're over-sizing the system, borrowing intensive units you don't need. And when the plant starts, when the plan is finally paid off, you'll have to spend another $40 million, whoom, to replace the old plant. Long-term financial picture, right now the city has already had to rely on a quarter million dollar grant to repair a failing sewer system. I guess it had issues with the inflow or infiltration. If we're already struggling to fund essentially repairs like that, adding $40 million to a new water plant, water plant that is not going to make things easier. What I'm asking tonight, I'm not there finding to tell Osawatomie what to do. I'm asking for the city council to look at corrected, the corrected Rural Water Two proposals side by side with your announced plan, and let the public see the real numbers. Your plan is truly the best long-term option that they will dive it up. If not, you still have time to choose a partnership that keeps rates low, avoids massive debt, new debt, and ensures long-term reliability and sustainability. In closing, at the end of the day, we all want the same thing, cleaning, providing local water for Osawatomie residents to future growth. We can get there without overbuilding, overborrowing, or overexpending. Let's make sure that our plan for the community, what the community actually produces, not inflated numbers that hurt this, that could hurt the generation economy at a few times. Oh, and I would like to use Trent Morris's good part of Rural Water Two. He's actually here. He's actually playing a public proposal that we presented.
Thank you. Council, mayor, city administrator, hello. My name is Trent Morris. I'm assistant general manager of Miami Rural Water District Number Two. I believe you all have received our proposal. I do have copies here. If anybody would like those, I can pass them around here. Primarily, just coming here to let you guys know that we're your neighbors. We're here if you end up deciding that you would like to have some type of interconnection with us, whatever that looks like and whatever the timeframe that is. We have put together a handful of different options and scenarios to provide city water in terms of different volumes. And there is one correction on the page here. I did three scenarios depending on the volume. So, there's scenario one would be if you guys would like to purchase 1 million gallons per day of water. Scenario two is 2 million gallons per day. Scenario three is 3 million gallons per day. The correction would be made on the scenario three. I put it as 2 million gallons per day, it should be 3. With that being said, we do have a new expansion project that was just completed to our treatment facilities on Hillsdale Lake. We can provide quite a bit of capacity out of our existing plant, and we're also in the process of expanding that. So, there's multiple options if you guys wanted to continue that conversation about, you know, purchasing wholesale water, potential partnership in interconnects, in the expansion of our plant, in a number of different things. As Brad mentioned, our, our cost estimates for providing you guys water looks like, in the amounts that you guys are looking for, it would be approximately an 11 and 1/2 mile water line extension, and we have costs of different line sizes based on those pool rates. With that being said, the total cost per thousand is $4.53. That would be using Miami Two's water rights allocated out of Hillsdale Lake. We share Hillsdale Area Water Cooperative, which is a conglomerate of entities that pull water off of Hillsdale Lake. We share those water rights in whole through the Kansas Water Office. I'm available to answer any questions you guys may have, and just wanted to let you guys know it's ultimately your decision, and we're totally acceptable to whatever decision that ends up being. At some point in the long-range future, we would like to have a continued conversation in terms of resiliency and redundancy to have some type of additional interconnects between PEA, the water plant on the Marazin River, City of Osawatomie, and Miami Two. Just to make the area more resilient to any drought issues or contamination in individual water streams, that type of thing. With that being said, that was all I had to present. If you guys have any questions, feel free to answer. If not, I can sit down.
I think I have a question, Trent.
Yes, sir.
You made corrections to the option three. Did you need to correct the size of your water tank?
Uh, thank you for clarifying. No, actually. So, we were able to change the hydraulic. So, if there is a price difference in the scenario of 2 million gallons per day jumping up to 3 million gallons per day, we are able to do that with the same pipe size, but with the 3 million gallons a day, we would need a booster compensation. So, it increases that cost from 11.76 million to 13.76, but it's using the same 16-inch water main to do that.
Earlier today, you sent us the water rate analysis that, in that you provided to you, and it has scenarios A through H. It discusses with Spring Hill, rate increase to break even with Spring Hill, no proposed changes with Spring Hill, proposed rate increases to break even without Spring Hill, version D, is proposed rate increase to maintain 125% debt service capacity ratio without Spring Hill, no proposed changes absorbing Spring Hill, proposed rate increase to break even absorbing Spring Hill, and proposed rate increase to maintain 125% debt service absorbing Spring Hill. Which one of the rate scenarios is Rural Water District Two currently enacting? Because right now, the rates for 2025, if you pay for cost per thousand to your residential customers, should be $5 per thousand if your meter charge is $22. But in fact, those were raised in June, correct, to $27 per meter charge, $1,000 that was given free with the $27 meter charge was removed, and now it's, every gallon is charged at the $6.50 rate. So, I'm not, I'm trying to follow what rate tier you're currently pursuing. The Spring Hill's gone to Water One, and according to the information that's on file with KDHG, in 2019, Spring Hill bought 170 million gallons of water from Rural Water District Number Two. In 2021, which is the closest number I had from our water report to the Kansas Water Office, Osawatomie sold or produced metered 240 million gallons of water to its customers. And it was that, that's the exact same Kansas Water Office report we all have to file at the end of the year. So, one of the earlier comments was, Osawatomie's not needed to bail out of Rural Water District Two. My question is, is, I guess, you pulled, is it not true that Osawatomie would be a nice supplement to replace Spring Hill since Spring Hill left Water One? And then secondly, which rate structure are we following? Because the one that I think you are following is scenario P, which indicates in 2030, your average water bill will be $81 for 5,000 gallons at $8.65 per thousand and $38.04 per meter. So, if you can answer that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the question. So, there's a couple of things I want to separate first. So, we have, Miami Two has a water supply district to our own patrons. So, we have residential customers, as the city does with your guys as well. Then we have wholesale water. We have different calculations and methodology for the way those are both treated. We, we, in a way, we run the water treatment facility as almost a wholesale water supply district. So, it's a different rate structure calculation that's completed to calculate our wholesale rate on an annual basis. Yes, we are incentivized to, the more water we sell, the more those costs, variable and fixed for electricity, chemicals, things like that. They're divided out between more people, so it's economy of scale that the more water we sell, the cheaper it gets for each entity. Within what you're referring to in that sheet, that is Miami Two's district itself. So, we have numerous 30-inch, going down to inch and a half water mains. And so, we have to have higher rates for our residential customers to maintain that distribution system. We have a network of towers, mains, there are all of them.
Can I get, I understand all of that?
Yeah.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, according to this sheet, it looks like it was considered what the rates need to be with Spring Hill and what rates need to be without Spring Hill, and the rates without Spring Hill are clearly much higher than the rates with Spring Hill. And since Spring Hill has led, in not 2019 to 2021, Osawatomie was selling, or could have been purchasing, 70 million more gallons of water per year from Two than Spring Hill would have bought. So, it's hard not to imagine that we would be a nice replacement for Spring Hill. Because your rate structure is completely different. It's half if Spring Hill stayed with Rural Water.
So, yes, so Spring Hill in terms of gallons per day was approximately 500,000 in that range. You guys are a little bit more than that. The area that our distribution is split up into and subdivided, there's, we have three different pressures though. Spring Hill was on a different set of pumps, a different set of calculations and that structure. I'm not going to say that it wouldn't be beneficial to sell the water, and we have additional capacity in the water plant, so we're more than happy if a situation presents itself to sell that water, or yes, more than happy to. Just the economy of scale reasoning that, you know, wholesale, the more water you treat through the plant, the cheaper it gets for all entities. And it's divided equally just on a fixed and variable cost.
Sure. And then I want to have one more question. On these three scenarios that you sent over late this afternoon, these do not reflect the cost of purchased water, correct?
Correct.
Because it's a dry pipe.
Yep.
So, to present it as it's $20 million cheaper to buy 3 million gallons a day from Rural Water District Two than it is for Osawatomie to produce its own is very misleading. And that's been the issue all along through this whole discussion is we're presenting, we have handed out to our council a document that says it's only $30 million to buy from three, and it's $50 million to build our own plant. But that 30 million is a dry pipe.
Yeah.
And we buy 273, we sell 273 million gallons a year. So, when you do that math over the course of 20 years, you have to add 22 million more dollars to your bottom line, making each one of these scenarios more expensive than us building our own plant.
It's ultimately your guys' decision. I, I would not, if, I am an engineer, and I would not typically set up a cost evaluation on alternatives this way. I was copying the format from the P E R. For example, annual operations and maintenance of Miami Two's alternative. In this table, I put $917,000. I'm copying that from the reserve. Miami Two would, would maintain the operating and maintenance of that entire pipeline. So, this is really a, it's a cost that you guys have to pay whether you, the 917,000 annual loan, and that's your guys' own infrastructure. So, it's, it's not really fair to put some of those things on the Miami Two alternative versus Osawatomie, because the city would have to pay it either way. But in, my main reasoning for doing that was just to keep it apples to apples, so that you can see the water rate, the, everything transfer over for the different capacities.
Right. But it's, but I'm just trying to point out, it's not apples to apples right now, because this 49 million puts water in the pipe, and this 29 million does not.
And I'd like to clarify, the 917 is the cost, that's saying the cost of our distribution system, that 1,004 includes that 917. So, it is being included in the water plant numbers, so that we could take it off of Rural Water, but then we would take it off of our side two.
Yeah.
And so, that wouldn't actually change at the end the numbers, because it's a wash.
Well, and some of those are variable costs, so it depends on how much water is sold, how much, you know, degradation there is on the pipeline and infrastructure. Some of that comes down to how much water is flowing through it. So, it's, yes, I, I'm not saying that any of these numbers are perfect or exact. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of our, mainly our insulation costs of the pipeline, you know, what we think it would cost to bring that supply to you guys, and then what we think that water rate would be.
So, I do have a question. It's been brought up online, and I was wondering if you briefly could explain the treatment process that we're, Rural Water Two, with the controls that are added to the water?
Yeah, of course. So, we have a, currently a 6 million gallon per day surface water treatment plant we pull off of Hillsdale Lake. We have an intake structure right on the lake, and then our water treatment facility is approximately a mile and a quarter due east of that facility. In terms of chemicals, we feed sodium permanganate at the intake, that's an oxidizer. We feed polymer, we have a waiting agent that's called Hawkins 9937. They are salt molecules that allow the particles in the water to fall out and settle out. We feed powder-activated carbon, and we feed gas chlorine for disinfection. So, those are the primary chemicals we feed. Currently, we're doing chlorine to free burn, so we're just doing gas chlorine. We also have liquid ammonia that we feed as well. Is that answered?
Yes. Terry, would you mind talking about our process?
Similar intake structure going into the plant. We feed a polymer, we do not feed a waiting agent, we do not feed, what else did you, upside of sodium, what'd you say it was?
Sodium permanganate.
Yeah, we don't feed that. So, we feed polymer, we feed it powder-activated carbon, we use chlorine, a liquid chlorine, sodium pot proline, and then we use alum to, not alum, I'm sorry, long yet. So, we made four means like you're talking about. We just got done with the free chlorine, burn, went back to total chlorine and like that.
So, very similar treatment process, and very simple.
And then I also wanted to just say thank you, because this week we talked back and forth on email. I know it was on the way, but you have been incredibly helpful and responded to any question that I had. So, I definitely want to mention that to the council, that Rural Water Two has been very willing to make adjustments so fast, you know, what's the difference here, and what would this include? A couple of times I've heard that either we could share financing on water tower, or that Rural Water Two would be going to finance the transmission line. I've not seen any terms on that, so things are very difficult to compare, apples to apples with the USDA loan terms that we have, have terms that we can use.
We can't, yeah, we can get those. I would like to narrow it down to a couple of, because right now, we're kind of, we have three different scenarios for capacity and different line sizes and different things like that. So, if we could get, if you guys wanted to be more serious about it and get dialed into a certain scenario, we could definitely get with our term draw, some terms. We're, I would say, we're trying to be neighborly. We're not trying to, you know, make a ton of money or anything out of this. So, our attempt would be to match, you know, fairly similar to what you guys have.
Okay. And I figured that would probably be the answer. I took your numbers, and I created a, they kind of, a table that kind of shows what that interest would look like, and then after 20 and 40 years. And I had a major assumption. And recently, we went out for general obligation bonds, and that was a 20-year term at a quote of 2%, 2%. I just used that. If the numbers would be better than that, then obviously it would be a little bit, it seemed like a fair option, because that was a market amount. And so, it's in front of the council, I can put some out here as well. With the interest and everything coming out, that is 1 million gallons per day is just not going to be sufficient for us. We do have peak days where we produce more than a million. I included it on there, you included it, it's just not going to be an option. The other two, to address the 3 million gallon per day, what the plant actually is, is a 1 million gallon per day plant in two trains. So, if we run both of those trains, both of that would definitely be at the same time, we could push out 3 million gallons. The idea is to only be able to run one at a time and have one down for maintenance, or to be able to go back and forth and use them in tandem. Right now, we run two ships. We don't want to be running a plant 24 hours a day. I don't know if you're sort of a 24-hour person or not. I can't remember where I asked.
We don't currently, we have option where we can, but we.
So, it'd be a similar situation. We don't want to run 24 hours a day. We are building a plant at a 3 million gallon capacity, gives us those two even trains that gives us for that, and also would allow us to only run the two ships that we run currently. So, it'd be a similar operations process to what we already have, which is what was shown in that going in. And then we talked about this. We do believe that we would need additional storage. Building a water treatment plant would allow us to expand our clear well, which would address that. If we don't build a water treatment plant, then we will need another water tower. You did address that in this, I can't remember where I put it down. Oh, in this updated amount at the top there for everyone. And then, at the end of the day, the big thing that the USDA funding does allow us to do is replace our distribution. And that is estimated at $15 to $18 million. The reason we need to replace distribution is we have pipelines around that are 100 years old, close to 100 years old, and then we also have lead. As I'm sure you're aware, the lead and copper wool that is coming out from the EPA will require us to replace all of those lead pipes, also services. So, that funding from the USDA does address that. If we hook up to Rural Water Two, we will not have that funding to address the distribution. And so, I have included that on there as well. I did refer to the 18 million, we can negotiate that back and forth, but just to make it apples to apples. And so, including all of those things, and then going out for 20 or 40 years, I am still showing that the water treatment plant over that 40 years is the cheaper cost. Happy to talk to anybody about that. I will put these out like I said. One thing that I think council just really needs to think about as well is that if we were to switch gears on this, I know it's been brought up, that we could use this USDA funding for this, for this option. We did reject our grant administrator, but they do not believe that as far as we are down the road, that it would be something that we could just change direction and just use that funding. They indicated to us that we would have to reapply and go through the application process. That application process lasted until how long?
Two years.
Two years. Spending another two years trying to get that funding and try to make this decision when the community, I mean, we're already having difficulty at the water treatment plant, we're already having difficulty with our distribution system, and the lead and copper wool is, I mean, we've already turned in all of our paperwork on that, and so I would expect that to start in the next several years, the expectation of replacements. That, that's quite a risk. And without our grant administrators being like, that's a good chance, I think it may be too heavy of a risk. So, if we were to try to change decisions now, I think we need to assume that that USDA funding would be there. So, that's where all of those interests come through in that. What else did I write down? I think that's honestly about it, that what we need to do there. I can answer other questions, either from me if you have any, or from council. And then like I said, I'll throw these out on table, the actual ones that I have.
I do have more questions. I also looked on over five minutes, so if you'd like to go with that. One of my questions is, is that how are water rights only compared to, I've always heard that Houston is a situation. I've always heard that you've studied that situation. So, and that's a high concern for me, and I know you're not a state legislature, but if I use that question, that's a concern for me. One of my other questions is, is that on our water, I don't know if it's home rights or allocation off Hillsdale Lake, you guys excess plus Spring Hills, how much is that per day? Will we be possibly available or allocate by water per day?
We have enough excess allocation to add on another 4,500 water meters. So we could double in size and still have our current allocation active.
And one of the things on your strategic benefit this thing, whether the county has two, three, four water distributors. I think redundancy in the supply is an extremely important thing. So if there's four, one goes down, the other three can support it. But reading the rest of your strategic benefits, and maybe I'm just misinterpreting, but it said that cost today on water treatment plants is nine, still utilized simply delayed. So in reading that, I'm kind of getting the feeling that part of this is we would still be building a plant in the future.
Great, great question. Thank you for asking. And I don't feel like I clarified that previously, so yeah, very, very good question. This conversation of what this proposal is, has kind of evolved over time. So it started as a conversation of could Miami Two temporarily supply the city water during construction of the new treatment plant? Because at one point in time, there were conversations that might not be a make it will be working for a certain amount of time. So that's kind of where the conversation started, and then at another point in time, it was my understanding that this would be a temporary water sale to the city for a time period of extended time. So the initial one was maybe a 100 to 500, so we came up with a cost for that. The second scenario was a 20 to 30 year contract, allowing the city to begin generating revenue to save up, at which point in time, 20 to 30 years in the future, they would then begin construction of a water plant. So that is, that strategic benefit would be if the city went with that scenario to build the cash reserves, build the fund allocated to water treatment construction, purchase water temporarily from Miami Two, and then build the water plant in the later day. Strategically, in terms of countywide, that would go to Miami Two, as you were just saying, because then we'd have multiple interconnects with multiple water treatment points in the area, so we have a lot of redundancy.
And my other question is that as a former Rural Water Three member, whatever we are, I remember that I installed a water main, and then as soon as I installed it, it referred ownership to the district. Who would own this water?
Whoever wants to maintain is what comes down. So the, the way we have proposed this alternative is that it's just like another line extension for a customer usage. So the city goes water, we have to pay for the water main extension, at which time we hand it over to Miami Two. That water main, which is in Miami Two's territory, once it's in the city limits, then it will become city's. And all of the maintenance and replacement costs and everything, that's built into our cost per thousand water rate that we, that puts in you guys.
So if the city paid for the 11 and a half miles of it, and let's just for simplicity, say 11 miles, if that is outside the city limits, theoretically, then you guys would own the 11 miles of it and could potentially hook on to Rural Water Three as they let me us then as our customer.
That was brought from the beginning, so no, because we would be coming, so from Hillsdale Lake, running straight south of Oswabi, doesn't go through any of Miami Three territory, and that line wouldn't have capacity built in. It's just being sized for your guys' capacity that you're requesting, so there's no additional cost to that. If...
It is water free. It does have capacity for three, because three...
Oh, we could, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. That, in my mind, that is fairly simple because we would just, you guys can negotiate that in your portion of the contract when signing on for this, where Miami Two, there would be conflict where Miami Two would sell water to the city of Oswabi, so therefore they couldn't circumvent, go around to Miami, that can written with the contract that way.
But as far as the rest of the main and like territory, whatever, you guys would be able to tap on to it if needed?
Yeah, there is potential. If, yeah, if, some ways we do that, if Miami Two wanted additional capacity, and they would pay, say it's you guys, the city of Oswabi only needed a 12 inch. Miami Two wanted some additional capacity to send another direction. We could pay the cost difference between a 12 inch and a 16 inch. So we could put in the 16 inch. City could pay for only a 12 inch. That cost difference would be taken care of by Miami Two, and then we'd tee off of that even ahead of the direction. So that, there is an option for that. That wasn't in this proposal.
But what if it's already in the ground and you want to tee off of that?
If we already pay for the 16 inch and bring it three main a day, we're not using it currently?
Yeah. I do not have a good answer on that. We would always reserve that peak capacity for you guys, so I believe your 1.5 million gallons would be your peak demand. That's usually only for a couple days in the summer, so that would free up a lot of other storage in there that could be beneficial to tap. If there's, where the water mains coming through, if there's an house right next to it, I can see potential for running a tap off of that. It would be Miami Two's water line, the way it's currently set up under proposal. But we would, by contract, we would have to provide the city that peak demand, whichever alternative that is.
But if our peak demand grew to 2 and a half main in 10 years from now, and you've already tapped in and pulled to where that pipe doesn't cover it anymore?
Then it would be Miami Two's responsibility to upgrade the pipes and, yeah, put it into a line or loop it in the system, yeah.
So we would almost have to decide today what our needs are going to be for the lifetime of this expenditure, I guess what it is.
I wouldn't necessarily say that because a lot of this growth is built into some of these numbers. If there's just residential and light industrial growth, it may take the lifetime of the pipeline before it's reached there. So it would be a situation where if we put in the 16 inch main for 2 million gallons a day, if your guys' peak is 1.5 million gallons a day, but your average is 750, just off of looking at, you know, previous growth trends, it would take quite a while before you reach that capacity, so long that Miami Two would have to upgrade that pipe before that growth came. If it was a situation where there's a large industrial user that needs, we've got some requests of 3 M G D to 6 M G D for one, so yes, then something like that would definitely need to be upgraded. A lot of that is handled with the facility that needs that much water. They would pay for an additional expansion.
We got to keep moving to the rest of the meeting, but I got one more, maybe. But the report that we got a couple years ago from Andrew Swarner, who gives the report that's...
Andrew Swarner off the presentation.
Right. It said Hillsdale Lake was the first lake to silt in the state of Kansas. We had like four years ago before it was silted in and go along with Rural Water.
Wait. I would turn this off on fourth engineer.
That's on the fourth engineer side.
Yeah. The, the concept of reservoir is that, yes, there's velocity that comes in from floodwater. Over time, it slows that velocity in the reservoir itself, and silt has been dropped out before it goes over the wall. There's discussion about 50 to 100 years from now, potentially raising the reservoir. Each foot would add a tremendous amount of water volume. There's also some interconnects to other systems that are to the north. Water One would be a good example. They have a tremendous amount of water rights that they pull off. They have treatment plants on Kansas, they have desert river, so it would be a conversation connecting onto the, Miami Two would connect onto those to continue to supply the areas out.
Well, I appreciate you, Terry. If there's any questions after the meeting before you, I don't know if you're planning on stepping around or not, but...
Yes.
That would be great.
I just wanted to add, because they did point it out, Brett mentioned that these numbers are dry pipe over 20 years. If we estimate that we don't need any more water than we pulled in 2021, then 20 years of purchasing water is going to be about $22.5 million. And I think that's an important number for, not just council, but for everyone to hear, that that is in addition to the cost of the pipe.
Is that as the count steps right now?
No, that's a 2022 number. We actually do produce more water than that now, but I didn't want to inflate it.
In the last five years, we've started, we've sold, we're selling 30 million more gallons a year than we were five years ago.
So that's not slowing down?
It's not slowing down.
So you agree in that number, we need to add that number in there, in the total cost of what water would cost in that 20 years? Because we're using your number that we're going to pay.
Yes.
That's what we need to use your number that we're going to pay for that water in that time.
It is typically a pass through charge, so if the city paid whatever that cost of water is, that is passed on to the patron. So if it's the combination of a treatment plant loan and the debt payment for that and the production cost of water, the production cost will be cheaper to the city, what the city pays versus purchasing wholesale. So it needs to be the comparison between the production cost of water and the loan payment of the water treatment facility versus wholesale water and potentially some storage upgrades and other things to the system. So it's, it's way, those two is the difference between...
It is a pass through account, but that's 22 million will be passing through.
The, yeah, it is a, it is a big number and yes, but it's, it will have to be paid one way or the other, and it's just choosing which one is...
But in our, in our calculation, we already have our cost of produce.
The production cost.
Production water is in there.
Including the water cost.
All right, I say, appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I'm Pauline Corrigan, making a sports wife. I love the dialogue discussion that went on here, the questions, that was amazing. One question I have for you guys, since it was brought up about Spring Hill leaving Rural Water Two, what is Oswabi going to do if Rural Water Three decides to leave and know that Rural Water Two, and you guys are stuck with High Hill? What are you guys going to do at that point? And then you guys brought up the sediment with Hillsdale. I would also like to bring up that the Maracay River flows through quite a bit of urban and agricultural land. It is prone to flooding, and so it picks up a lot of that sediment and debris. And so what are you guys going to do to test the water to make sure that as it picks up all of the phosphorus, nitrates, all, just all of the runoff from the chemicals that are sprayed onto the crops? How are you guys going to protect your citizens from that? Is there going to be third party testing? And the lead in the pipes that currently are standing in Oswabi meter? You know, what's going to be done with that? Another thing that I want to bring up is the cost of the water plant. When I ran my numbers, I ran them at 3.25, and I just heard Michelle gives a number of 4.22. You guys are running that over a 40 year loan, and so that is going to substantially raise the prices for, for your town. And so it puts it at about 82 million. And so I know you guys talked about the 20 million with Rural Water Two. Let's talk about the 80 plus million with Oswabi. And you guys have, without Rural Water Three, I believe you have 1,600 meters that are going to carry the price, the cost of that 82 million dollars over 40 years, when I think the numbers were that I saw 40% of your town is at or below the poverty rate. And you guys already have the highest water rates. I mean, the highest. I pay half what you guys pay, and I'm halfway. And the water from Hillsdale is cleaner. It is, I believe, you know, something like this. I think that this should not be a vote for the people in this room. I think there should be something that is discussed openly with the people that are going to be paying us back. I think they should have all of the facts. I think that the city should present their numbers. Rural Water should present their numbers. Everybody should have a chance to discuss the numbers and what was said. And after that, I think the public is the ones, since they're the ones paying for it, that needs to have the final say and the final vote. I think this needs to be on the ballot, and I think it needs to be voted for, not, not a decision that you guys make. And the reason I say that is because if somebody were to get my bank account and my credit and go and buy a million dollar home that I'm going to be paying for for the next 40 years, I would want to know everything that I could about that home. I would want to inspect it, I would want reports, I would want to walk through it, I would want everything that I needed to know about that home that I'm going to be paying on. I would not want somebody else to make that decision, especially somebody that has shown time and time again through the maintenance of your yard and getting $200 an hour charged to you and not even considering what that does. That, that same person that is charging your constituents $200 an hour to mow their lawn if they don't get to it quick enough is the same person that is going to make the decision if they have to carry this 82 million dollars. And I don't think that's right. And so I think this needs to be presented openly. I think it needs to be well thought out, not we've already made the decision, the decision's been made, we're going forward. That's, that's not right. It needs to be the public, and it needs to be on ballot, and it needs to be a vote because this is too big for this town not to have that right.
Any other public comment?
So I've seen all the hair, 11 and 18, so I've seen the debates going on with all the information on the water stuff online. I didn't comment on any of it until somebody asked me what my thoughts were, because I want to see all the information on both sides before making any decision, you know, what way I think this better. I, I hear and I agree with a lot of the comments about Oswabi needs to be able to have its own self alliance with water and things like that. I think those are all valid, true points. But at the same time, I, I also see what it's like for the person in Oswabi who's on a fixed income. And so as this decision is made, I agree that it probably should be passed to the people of Oswabi that have a real sense of it. But, you know, the fact is that while Oswabi doesn't have its own water... But, you know, the fact is that while Oswabi doesn't even have its own water self-aliance, that doesn't necessarily mean that a plant has to be built right now, so far from what I've seen of all the information. If there's a cheaper option with Rural Water District Two, and, you know, I want those numbers to be gone through, make sure whichever one is cheaper, if it's cheaper to buy it from Rural Water District Two now and then build the plant later, then I say build the plant later, because the, this government, it seems that if we're going to be fixated on a predetermined decision, then it does not seem that we're looking at things from a standpoint of trying to work within our needs. I think that we're putting the cart before the horse if we're saying, well, you know, we just need it, we've just got to do it. Oswabi needs to be able to pay for it, and if Oswabi is relying on a struggling business economy and, you know, a bunch of people on fixed incomes, that's a recipe for disaster. And in my opinion, focus needs to be on building the business economy, small business economy here in Oswabi. First, take the cheaper option. It's not the ideal option, it's not the option that everybody wants, it's a terrible, if Rural Water District Two is a cheaper option, then I think that we need to take the cheaper option, work on building up that business economy so that we can actually afford to build a plant without keeping a huge burden on people on fixed incomes in Oswabi who are already struggling. If our horse is dying, it doesn't matter if the cart's wheels are falling off. And right now it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. And so all I would ask is for consideration of how the costs get passed on to the people. Not the people who are doing fine in Oswabi, the people who are struggling in Oswabi. Because those people, there are a lot of people in Oswabi who've lived here for years and years and years who are struggling, and those people don't deserve to be taken out of town because they can't afford to live here anymore. And so I would really ask for serious consideration of those homes, of those people. And as that pertains to all decisions, I also wanted to bring up the discussion about audio visual last week, I thought it was crazy, you guys had a discussion. Clearly, I'm here fulfilling that need right now because it hasn't been fulfilled. I have no interest to keep doing the sitting walk-in that I have to keep doing. I'm only doing it because nobody else was, so I support it, and that's it. So if you guys think that, that's fine, but at the same time, options that were discussed last week were incredibly expensive, tens of thousands of dollars, I believe, maybe more. I don't remember all the numbers that were passed around, but there was some really high numbers. I can solve this right here, we could, I could set up the microphones in here so we can catch everything that needs to be caught, whether the city manager wants to allow it or not. I could set up something in here that would cost you less than a thousand dollars. Because I have really basic, this is not complicated stuff, but if you guys want to spend exorbitant amounts of money, all it does is demonstrate an attitude that, hey, you know what, we're the government, we can just spend whatever we need, and if we need more, we can always just take it from the people. And I don't know if that's your attitude, I don't know if that's how you're looking at it, but it is the thing that we, the public, see. It is the thing that looks like what was happening. And the people in Oswabi deserve for every dollar to be taken seriously, because these dollars, the thing that needs to be remembered is that the government of Oswabi has zero dollars. It's the people's dollars.
Any other public comment?
Being at Soren's, you can industrial drive. I'll just kind of compare this to gas. No blood runs out and pays twice as much for gas, light, and vehicles. They shop around, they get gas as cheap as they can, same way with water or any other product. I think that, you know, when it comes to public money, it seems like it's a free-for-all. We just spend a lot of money because it's taxpayer money, and it seems like there's no end to it. So I'd just like to, you know, compare the people, do have budgets, everybody in this room, and I don't think that I can see anybody in this room that would raise their hand for higher gas prices. Why would we do it for water? Number two is, I like the progress of ten acres, keep the light and keep it positive. It looked like a shipwreck there for a little while, but it's coming together, and whoever implicated that, I think, is a good idea, and I think it's going to be a good part of the community. That's it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll move on to, it looks like we had no.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, yep. Couple of things were brought up. One, what happened to Rural Water District Three besides the leak? We would have that conversation probably in court with Rural Water District Three. There's federal law that would prohibit one large wholesale customer like a Rural Water District from leaving us. In that scenario, given the fact that we have relied upon the revenues from their customer meter to finance this project. And secondly, I don't know where I see eighty million, a hundred million, I don't know where these numbers come from. The cap of our loan for the plant is thirty million dollars. Once we hit thirty-one million dollars, that millionth dollar is on eighteen million dollars in grant. So our loan is thirty million dollars period, and I want that to be clear, crystal clear to everybody.
You asked a question about testing. Currently, we do third-party tests, most water producers do. I imagine you guys also send out their water for testing, and that includes all of the things that you brought up. Those tasks, we publish annually, that is a requirement. Every water producer produces that document, that water quality document. None of those numbers are our numbers, that is all either K D H G or a third-party tester. And I think if you pull the water quality reports between us, between Rural Water Two, even between any of the other Kansas surface water producers, you'll see a lot of the same things, a lot of the same concerns, because surface water in Kansas does have runoff issues. That's just, that's how surface water works. When I worked for Hutchinson, we had different issues because we were well-watered, and there was actually contamination that had entered into our wells through contamination plumes from industries and different things. And so we have a reverse opus plan in order to address. So there's, every water source has its own issues, surface water sources tend to have a lot of the same ones, but there is still third-party testing, and that is still submitted in K D H G, and that is reported out in the annual report. As far as the lead lines, we have notified every single person, our sorry, property owner within the community, that we have identified either a lead service connection or potential lead service connection or unknown, or we were unable to identify what that connection was. They have been notified, and they have been offered a free lead test. Everyone who has submitted for that free lead test, we've gone, collected it, and recorded those numbers back to them, again, that was third-party testing. None of those tests have come back in a concerning range, but the lead copper rule is still on T P A federal mandate, and we will have to follow it no matter what those tests come back as. Another question, the three point two five percent versus the four point two two percent. Let me clarify, I must have said something that was confusing there. The USDA loan is at three point two five percent. Since we don't know what the terms would be to have a loan to build the transmission line and water tower for the Rural Water Two option, I made an assumption that we would get a similar term as what we did on our last GeoVons, which were four point two two at four point two. That interest rate could be lower, it could be higher. I don't know what it would be, I just needed something to try and make the numbers even. I'd be happy to produce something that shows three point two five at forty years, even though I think that that's not something we could get on the open market, just to make it fully apples-to-apples across the board. Brett addressed the thirty million dollar cap on the loan. I'd also like to remind everyone that we have engaged a C mark that we'll have in their T maximum price, and that comes, when we reach that number, we will know what that number is going to be before construction even starts. So the conversations about, well, it could be a fifty million dollar plant, an eighty million dollar plant, all of those things, it won't be. We will save in our USDA funding, that's the reason why we have sought a C mark. As far as why the rates are high, as Council notes, we raised rates in anticipation of this project. There is no expectation that doing this project will be to a very large increase in rates moving forward, because that large increase has already happened. There could be the chance that there's a small increase here or there, depending, but that is true for every water district, small increases because of increases in operations, maintenance, cost of chemicals, those type of things. And then finally, Hillsdale being cleaner, if a surface water source too, I would drink Rural Water Two water just like I would drink Water One water, just like I drink the water out of our tap. I think that that's a very subjective statement, and it's not something that our annual water reports or their annual water reports prove. And I think it's a little disingenuous to try and use that to try and move us in a specific direction when the numbers that we do have, while they are all large, are really what the decision should be made off of, and that's all.
Okay. So we have no public hearing, no presentation, proclamation, appointments, we'll move on to item A of unfinished business review of A D equipment options for consideration.
So this speaks a little bit to what Oliver mentioned. Council sent me out, or sent, directed staff to look at some of the options available for us to be able to video all of city council meetings and provide them to the public in some way. One of the things that we discussed at council meeting was what Paola uses, it's called an owl. The cost for that is about two thousand three hundred, as listed on the A I S in front of you. The other thing that I did is I did go through, and I am not very savvy at this, but I had some conversations, and I tried to put together what we could piece together that would be a little bit cheaper but still provide a similar service. What this would be, this sheet that has a couple of links on it, but obviously you can't click because you're present. It would have table mics, it would have a podium mic, it would have an audio mixer and the cables to bring it into that mixer. We would use a webcam on a tripod, and then a couple other accessories to make that work, and then a case I put in here, because as you all know, we also have court in this building as well as baby showers, family arenas, all of those things, so we wouldn't be able to leave it set up. So a case to put everything in at the end of council. Using Amazon, I tried to roughly estimate that it can mess with about one thousand seven hundred dollars to do that option. I will say, on behalf of myself and Hanning, who likely would have to set this up by a given time, we would prefer the option that's a little bit more simple, but this option would provide mics, might be slightly better on the public. Happy to answer any other questions.
Would the mics be half all the time?
They would be. The one that's on here does not have an on/off button, I do not believe. I could obviously look at on/off. But these are, they're not like goose net mics, they're flat, and there'd be one basically on each cable, not one directly in front of you. It's more of like just an area of mic. The one that would be here would be a goose net mic.
But the owl, as proven through Paola, has taken care of all of that, right?
It is, they've liked it, and they have used it in emergency for minutes. Obviously, we would, it would not be the official record, we would not use it for minutes, but they have admitted to me that the quality on it was good enough to for three minutes. Yes. So that would be the amount that would be.
Is option one, you're worried about the audio quality, option two?
Option two, because what it is, is just, it's a.
It's a creepy owl.
It's a creepy owl, again, but the one I have here, you can turn the mic off so it won't let's be. It would sit on its own little table of some sort of stand right here, and it just swivels and picks up based on who is talking. Paola hasn't had an issue with it, but obviously having mics is always going to be a more reliable option.
Was the other option going to be able to be live?
Both of these options can hook into Microsoft Teams. We are in the middle of switching over to being a Microsoft, that's a Google client, and would be able to, down the road, be live.
But would that only be on Teams, because Teams requires a subscription, I believe?
We do have, like, we are a Microsoft, so we would go through that, because we do all of our.
From the resident side.
I think the discussion was not to go live right now, because you have to make sure the customers, they can't have anything in it for live.
Yeah, so like, there's more issues.
It'd be in the way, because what you can put on.
A day or two delay probably before it went up, like.
There's a whole one here, but.
For all of our open records and open meetings requirements, there are certain terms with it being just fully live. The other option that Paola uses is they livestream through YouTube, I believe. All things that we could explore down the road.
The key to me is that we need to move forward in getting this done. It's something that we probably should have done a few years later, talking to the last meeting, where we were always just kind of planning on revamping this whole thing and doing it as a part of this building, but obviously that hasn't happened, and the options aren't.
Yes, it is money. I would have scouted it earlier and only asked roughly. I do have another question, this probably, question for over here. What if Brett was laying over and asking attorney-client, have a privilege to, Mr. Dean?
Well, the mic, if it was just Paola mic, there's a very good chance that he picked it up. If it's the owl, you would have to receive a lot of number to actually turn to try to pick it up, but an open meeting isn't open to me.
There is no fact that attorney-client, none of the open meetings have all part of it.
What do you need it from us, anything to my?
The resolution that I put out, if you choose to vote on it, just directs us to begin, it says, directing City Sack to report to city council meetings and purchase the equipment necessary to do so. If you would like to pick one of these options, you definitely can change the motion to reflect that, or we can go forward with this, and City Sack will make the ultimate decision on that, or you can not vote on the motion or the resolution at all and ask us to bring more options or other discussion.
And option two, the owl is a self-contained unit, so you're only contract with one moment.
Correct.
So I would personally lean toward the owl, because it's a plus, it even has a little more money, and I agree with Nick, that because of all you see is, you know, the minutes where we voted, you did hear, you didn't hear what was going on. And just the idea that just record them and then make sure there's nothing inappropriate instead, or that we can air and then put it on, and the platform is two days later the next day or something like that.
Yes.
Do you have any questions from Michelle on that? Do you have any questions from Michelle on that? You know, can discuss the last meeting?
Is there any reason, anything that we shouldn't move forward with this? Then, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve Resolution 1327 with option two, the Owl.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Mason, and second by Councilwoman Brennan, to approve Resolution 1327, direct, according to direction on AV recording of council. Are there any other questions or comments in council? Madam Clerk?
That's for Jesse.
Aye.
That's for Mason.
Aye.
That's for Dean.
Aye.
That's for Dickinson.
Aye.
That's for Hennis.
Aye.
That's for Brennan.
Aye.
That's for Philton.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, which is Resolution 1327, approving the development agreement, 505-10 Main.
Two or three years ago, we, well, City Council authorized the city to purchase both 500 and 510 Main. The original purpose was to move the library from its current location to 500 Main. The cost of that project was exponentially prohibited and was not well-received amongst the community. And Council heard the community loud and clear, and paused that project and took a step back, reevaluated. That's how we ended up dusting off the original plan to expand the library with a phase two. But that didn't solve our problem of ownership, so earlier this spring, the Council authorized an RFP to be issued for the sale of both 500 and 510 Main. We were fortunate enough to have one, one party interested in the project, and they provided a proposal, $50,000 for both 500 and 510. I believe in the awarding of that proposal, that is lower than what, it is definitely lower than what we paid for those buildings, but to get them put back into productive use, and to also get the, to get the risk out from underneath the city's insurance umbrella and the maintenance of having those two buildings that are not being used by the city right now. It makes sense to overlook this, so the Council awarded to U.S. Federal Properties. The primary revenue stream for them is they have a several dozen across the Midwest, Century United States, VA clinics that they lease to the federal government. They also have many, many dozens of retail, not strip malls, but retail businesses that they, that they own the buildings and lease to the actual corporation. The items that are discussed in the development agreement, covered in the development agreement are, the city would agree to establish a community improvement district, with the developer paying all of those fees. The development, the community improvement district, that would have a whole separate conversation, discussion with the Council on what that development district looks like, and whether it would include more than just 500 and 510 Main, or whether we would include the entire 500 block of Main Street to help revitalize that core downtown. It also would include the city establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district, a reinvestment we established for 10 acres, and then the Council also authorized that project to be put out. That project is nearing completion, but an RHID for the upstairs apartments, for upstairs levels in downtown corridors, is also authorized under the RHID Act. The anchor tenant, the city must approve of the anchor tenant right now. The developer is proposing a small lawn and pot microbrewery that I believe got their start in Bonner Springs, and now also has a couple of other locations in the northeast Kansas area. The term of the development agreement is 15 years, there would be up to 10 apartments on the second story, retail commercial on the ground floor. Century 21 would be looking at moving into 510 Main, because we certainly don't want to displace them. So they would have first dibs on that space in the 510 Main building, and then apartment stalls on the east side of 500 Main. What they would like to do is to close those off, move the sidewalk out, so they can make it outside patio area for the, for the people that go and visit the microbrewery. On the concept of inside microbreweries, since microbreweries in areas where they are saturated, like Johnson &amp; Wynn in Miami County and over in Missouri, there's a, the, one concept we've looked at is having individual food spaces on the inside of 500 Main, with one side being the bar, and the brewery equipment being in the back. And then on the opposite wall, the common wall with 510 Main, that being the, some food spaces. I'm thinking something along the lines of like brick and mortar for our normal food trucks. So like, we have a six-month, where the melted bean, one of those spaces, or bone appetite, or Old Creek barbecue in one of the food trucks that typically come and visited our downtown space. That would be the goal with that, so they could be in a physical location more long-term instead of operating out of a food truck a couple times a week. The rest of the contract claim, which provides the basic framework for the cooperation, how the parties interact with one another. And then lastly, I would say, our city attorney, Jeff Dean, has had the opportunity to review the agreement and provide comments, which were all accepted by the developer in the full agreement. And if there's any questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer them.
What happens to the euro?
It would stay.
Like your logo?
Yeah, it would definitely stay. I think that's one of the selling points, actually, for Bird.
The 15-year term is on the CID.
The 15-year term would be on the, yeah, I mean, yeah, you would want the RHID and the CID both expired along with the contract yet.
And what hap, because this is the beginning of this. Trying to think how to word this, because I want to be optimistic.
Right.
If they don't put in the brewer, whatever it is, we, we still do away with parking spots and change that?
No, they would have to have their brewery walk in to a lease term before we did away with the parking spots.
And do we have a, not that you have a non-cancellable lease, but I'd say it's, they just tear all that out.
Yeah.
Some sort of callback, if they-
Right, yeah.
They put it back to the wish, or-
Right, right.
Or relays to somebody that used it for a set of purposes within a certain amount of time.
That would be a separate, we want to work out as part of the allowing for-
It's basically an encroachment on the public right of way, and that would be a separate.
It said something about, November 27. Is that when they're anticipating, like, opening or?
Yeah, those would be during opening days.
Would the apartments be like market rate apartments, or would it?
Is the apartments to 500 Main, a living in front of back?
I believe they talked six on 500 Main, so there'd be three along the east side and three along the west side with a hallway going down the middle, because there's already a hallway up there. And then 510, there would be four, and I would imagine those would be on each of the corners.
The reason I ask is actually because of the fact that we have a little bit of history up there. And they lose it.
Oh, yeah, with the outdoor.
With the log. And I hate to lose it.
Yeah, once this is signed, then they'll start sending in conceptuals, because it's going to be required as part of another resolution that's on the agreement, which is an application for a HEM agreement. So all of that will be brought before the Council, so you guys can see it.
Would we have to make any changes to our ordinances to allow for the consumption of the Owl mall on the sidewalk? I'll say on the sidewalk.
No, because when you do your liquor license, you draw an area where you allow Owl to walk in. And as long as that's fenced and separated from allowing, you can just walk off with it. You can do that. It's similar to what Austin has with their outdoor area.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 1329, approving development agreement for 500 and 510 Main.
Second. Got a motion by Councilwoman Brennan, and second by Councilman Chastain, to approve Resolution 1329, approving the development agreement for 500 and 510 Main. Any other questions or comments in council? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Chastain?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mason?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hennis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Philton?
Aye.
Motion carries, we move on to new business, Resolution 1326, the gap waiver for 2026 fiscal year.
I don't need to read the entire explanation of the waiver of gap. We do this every year. My suspicion is, the city's waiting for the gap requirement since the enactment of State Sact 751120 in 1935. My suspicion is the city's waiting gap every year since 1935. And this is a name elected as annual deal. I did, out of curiosity, ask our auditor if we were to not waive the gap and comply with generally, except we have the schools and seven Kansas municipal audit guidelines. He said the cost of that would be incredibly prohibitive, they wouldn't even do it, because you hire the large accounting firms out of, you know, larger than the public areas and go in, and they assess every single asset, and they assign value to it, and a useful life, and appreciation schedule, and all that. So just, just a little tidbit of information to the council, what something a nod looks like without the gap.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to pass Resolution 1326, waiver of gap for 2026 fiscal year.
Second. Got a motion by Councilwoman Mason, and second by Councilwoman Dickinson, to approve Resolution 1326, gap waiver for 2026 fiscal year. Any other questions or comments from Brett from council? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Chastain?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mason?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hennis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Philton?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution 1327, direction of AV recordings of council meetings.
We've already heard it, I thought we already did.
Two places. You want to reconsider, or would you do it? I don't think there are any options. Resolution 1328, 2026 P-K.
This is something that we typically would do more towards the end of the year, but with only one meeting in November and one meeting in December now according to code, it makes more sense to try to get it all the way earlier than trying to cram a bunch of stuff in the last two meetings of the year. So we went through the fee schedule, we have reached out to KMEA, they are conducting an electric rate study. We got a draft of it earlier this week, but we're not ready to finalize that and bring it to the council. We want to get a little more time under our belt before we frame that up, but we will not be recommending any electric rate increases. In case the council is curious, the city of Osuwatomi's electric rates are lower than any other provider in Miami County, and that's a study that KMEA does every single year. Obviously, Evergy is the only other customer or only other provider in Miami County that our rates are about $30 a month cheaper than at Evergy, at 1,500 gigawatts a month. So there will, there's no water rate increases, there's no sewer rate increases. We've talked in the past about reevaluating each of those rate studies that were conducted in 2022. Those are both, both of those studies are also underway right now with KMU. The increases that are being proposed, however, are increasing court costs from 60 to 75, and that is the city portion, not the other fees that are included. On top of the city's $75 court fee, there's a $23.50 charge that goes to the state for every case that goes through municipal court, and there's a $1.50 tech charge that that does to the state with the city, and that goes into our tech fund to help provide funding for technology upgrades. So the total cost for court costs in Osuwatomi will be $100. Payola is currently at 90, and Miami County is at 40. The rest of the fees, I believe-
140.
What did I say?
40.
Sorry, yeah, 140. I don't have my glasses on here. Cora, we're lowering Cora fees, there were two, there were changes in the state legislature earlier this year with both the Open Records and the Open Meetings Act. And these changes reflect not only the changes in state law, recent Attorney General's opinions as well. The accessory structures with 120 square feet or four area or less. We've always required permits for those, but there's been no charge. We just haven't actually identified that on the permit fee, and the only reason we want to issue a permit for those is so we can ensure that there's, they're compliant with zoning regulations, with lots of setbacks and numbers of accessory structures on property. So that is no change to the fee schedule. And then street, alley, and other right-of-way cuts by contractors. We currently require a $1,000 refund, a $1,000 refundable deposit to be made when street cuts get made. We have issues with contractors not backfilling them properly. And getting them to come back and do it on a timely basis is a struggle. So we're asking to have that be part of the fee. It's refundable, provided that the street gets put back, or the public right-of-way gets put back within 14, 14 days of the cut being opened. Admittedly, the city's not very good at this either, and we can do better on this as well. So it's going to be a playful, the city will be closing our openness within 14 days as well. That is one of the changes, but it's no fee increase. And then we propose to reduce the UTV registration, registrations to $100 a year from $200. And that's only on the initial registration, if you have to redo the registration on that same vehicle, subsequent renewals are only $50. And that's all that changes to the fee schedule for 2026.
No utility rate increases. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 1328, repealing Resolution 1268 regarding fees for 2025 and adopting certain fees for 2026.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Chastain, and second by Councilwoman Philton, to approve Resolution 1328, 2026 P-K. Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Chastain?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mason?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hennis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Philton?
Aye.
Motion carries, we move on to Resolution 1330, authorizing the application for a HEAL grant for 510 Main.
This round of HEAL grants, the first round that first one has been eligible to apply for a HEAL grant since the rights received their building for the construction downtown has a blown shop in the center within Kyro Packick office. 510 Main, as everybody is well aware, is in dire need of attention. We have spent quite a bit of money keeping that shored up to try to preserve it. I believe it's an excellent candidate. The city of Osuwatomi, and then Kurt and Shiva Wright, did a really, really good job with their HEAL grant. The state of Kansas was happy with the way that grant was managed and the dollars were used. So I think we've got a really good candidate for a HEAL grant. The grant itself is $100,000, with 100% match, the developers agreed to provide 100% match. So right out of the gate, we'll have $200,000 that is not coming out of the city coffers to help shore up that building and get it back to a usable condition. $200,000 is not going to touch what that building needs, it's going to be a lot more, which is why the developer asked for an RHID for the apartments downstairs, or upstairs, and then a community improvement district for additional funding for the rest of that. And then those are all bonds that they pay off themselves. So with that, I'll answer any questions that we might have.
When would they know if they were approved, do you think?
When would they know if they were approved to take?
I want to say we get notified in March and an announcement will be made probably in April.
So this would help the timeline of them being able to start sooner?
Correct. And then the application will be due December 30.
I'm a little curious as to five tens to five hundred because five hundred means more of historic buildings. It's just what's more, I don't know.
Five ten and more would be?
Five ten definitely has more.
It's a higher rate than five hundred would be.
Right. Five hundred is, it has a much better chance of qualifying for distorted tax credits. That's one of the priorities we're going to start working on to be how the development agreements been approved or applying for distorted tax credits for five hundred million which will apply them with a significant amount of dollars to help just to improve this that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 1330, authorizing the application for a Hill Grant for five ten main.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dickson and a second by Councilman Chastain to approve Resolution 1330, authorizing the application for a Hill Grant for five ten main. Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Chastain?
Aye.
Councilor Mason?
Aye.
Councilor Dean?
Aye.
Councilor Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilor Brad?
Aye.
Councilor Philton?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to council report. I'll start on left. Councilor Chastain?
It's nice to see that some of these R H I D things going in. I had a chance two weeks ago at the conference or something. I believe it was Pittsburgh down south has added fifty some apartments over their downtown buildings and beginning in construction housing. So if you see that and see the success that those places have had and what the impact it has on the local level.
I had just a thought on the water plant about the concept of not building it today and building it, we'll say ten years down the river. The total cost of days, forty million is likely sixty million down the river. So I'd have to wonder if that cost savings would even pan out, but that's just something I thought about.
Well, to speak to your point, Dave, yes, two years ago, it was thirty eight million. It went to forty eight million for the same project. So in this two and a half years, the cost of that jumped up ten eight dollars. So you're, I believe, I think we kicked this down the road. Ten or fifteen years is going to do nothing, go up, it's not going to go down. Yes, Kevin, you spoke of the conference. Had some really good seminars this year on property tax, on First Amendment rights and speech in a meeting. Couple of sessions that we set through, so that's all I've got.
Do we have an update on the main streets where we cut out the Culver? I guess we can get it poured before the rain's coming and we next to the property or will we get it poured back to the asphalt?
Eric, no. It, it will likely be when they have to come back around for any initial asphalt. Yeah, I don't have an update on that specifically. We do have the Culver extension order for the other pieces of that, which is why I thought you were asking questions.
No.
For a minute I was like, wait. And those just haven't been delivered yet. So we're waiting on a date for both the Culver extensions and then also for when they'll come back around and finish up all the little bits and pieces of asphalt that we have.
I think we have all those extensions for us for six weeks and we order them. So I've got to leave there.
Should be same.
Can you see the same? Is that something we can do? We discussed ourselves putting our extensions on or no?
We do believe that we have people that will do, yes.
Sorry, Derek.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Water, water, water. I think there's so much unknown for bidding for a line for eleven and a half miles. What happens if we could get two mile of rock, solid rock, we have to board through? We just had a project where it was five hundred dollars a foot to board?
Yeah.
Is that in your ever? I mean, you don't have to answer that. That's just what's on my mind. And what easements are there going to be? Is there any railroad tracks, waterways that we have to board under? I know dealing with the railroad is near impossible today. They don't like people on their property. That's just my concerns. I don't, I think we're not seeing the big picture because we're better than over which way to build. I'm still convinced, as I was in twenty-three when we decided to do a water plant, that the water plant is the best way to go for this city. And I, it's nothing against you guys. I still like you every one of you. I'd sit down and have a meal with you two, but I just think the water plant is the best thing to do for Osawatomie. And from a single dad raising a child on my own, my money is limited too. So every decision I make sitting here really impacts my household. That's all.
I would like to remind everybody, and I'm sure Sam, who's doing this too, that the Talking Two Zone is here Saturday night at seven o'clock is at the Oakstone Church. So show if you can. It'll be interesting. They, because of the weather, they took it out of the cemetery to the Oakstone Church. Also, Sam, I'm probably going to do a gun, but the Halloween party, the focus focus party, the adult Halloween party that the public library is hosting is November first, seven o'clock. We still have tickets available, so we will encourage everybody to at least consider going. It's going to be a lot of fun. You know, it's not just the kids who love Halloween. We, we love Halloween also. So yeah, you can get tickets online or you can see me or me. Sorry, I'm just, that's it for me.
Guess I kind of agree with you. Just a couple of things. We've had requests. We've had people in here in the past asking the board of the council to consider increasing the number of changes we allow in the yards. Is there any interest on part of the council?
Minus four and minus five.
It's five.
But it's a minus five per square feet. There's a square footage requirement for the five.
Correct, correct.
No, it's, it's based on the size.
Oh, it's correct.
I have one on four. What's the interest in the gap to what? That's a lot.
Well, one individual has requested and which I think is a lot, but.
But it's on the square foot requirement. We already have a square foot requirement.
Then that property will not fall away.
Right. I think we probably set all of them requirements based on something.
Correct.
I'm getting interest.
Do you? Don't care about it. It's half unable to talk. It's definitely. I guess we're trying to get general consensus if we want to open up the chickens.
If there's any interest in it.
How many people want to go in?
We've had a couple come in here in the past and we've had, once in a while we'll have, have any working. There's just one that's been asking here recently, has applied for a chicken permit and we can't cash the check because of that.
In my last stream, I never heard of chickens. Would be an issue.
You weren't here long enough to do that. There's chickens everywhere. If there's no interest, I'll follow. Second thing, you may have probably heard, Federal Reserve is pulling pennies out of circulation, so everyone who deals in currency will be, pennies will be, will start to be being pulled out of circulation. So we'll be rounding up or down to the nearest municipal. If you pay by credit, you pay utility bills or anything else with a check or a credit card, you still pay the exact amount, but if you're paying in cash, we're going to round, you know, thirty-three cents up to thirty-five and thirty-two cents down to thirty, to thirty. And then last thing I have Sergeant Sparks, he's from Sergeant. He hasn't quite updated from the news.
I just kind of wanted to update you guys on what we've kind of done lately. In the last thirty days, we've had six hundred seven calls for service. We've made twenty arrests, five for DUI, seven for drug related, and we took additional seventy-nine case reports. So known case owner chair, we made arrests on J C Thurman out here. He was a local drug dealer. We arrested him with, he was in possession of forty grams of methamphetamine. He's currently in federal custody now, which is pretty nice to see. Last week, we just dispatched a welfare check, a fifteen per ab. We found out somebody was overdosing on fentanyl. Used Narcan on her back and she's expected to make a full recovery. Two people escaped from the state hospital. We were able to get them back to the state hospital. And last month, we helped with the Fender suite operation with Miami County Sheriff's Office. Fenders out here, pretty successful. We had four arrests made out of that. Sorry, that's a little hard to say how much the health's paid her. Some cases we had closed. Faith Tracy pled guilty to her distribution of methamphetamine case out here. She got sentenced to three years in prison. Jackie Hayes, she was involved in the overdose of a child over the Alford Brown Street. She got twenty months in prison for that case. And David Joseph Harris, they were arrested on the highway. They were in possession of like sixty pounds of heroin and pain drugs of methamphetamine. David was sentenced to forty-one months in prison and Joseph was sentenced this week. So just kind of an update on that. But yeah, that's something for you guys.
Thank you.
Well, if anybody's interested, I got water studies from K P H M for Ottawa, Osawatomie. Hey, all of those, they seem they're all similar, but if you want to figure.
I'm done.
We'll move to the chair.
Still more.
Oh, I don't have anything else to add.
We got some better.
Sam?
Sam?
Danny still ours.
Danny, good to see you, my friend. I do have fundraiser tickets on me. I also happen to accept Venmo for those of you who are in your digital wallet phase because I don't pay the cash and I couldn't tell you how much I took it. It's going to be a great fundraiser. We're looking forward to having fun with the community. It's a convenient night out as well, so everybody's welcome to attend. It does benefit our expansion planning. As Brett mentioned earlier, the library is looking to revisit our 2010 expansion plans to give us some much needed square footage in our current facility. In addition, we did have a production company from the UK come out last week to the cabin. They spent about half a day with us and they filmed a really great portion of an episode of their documentary series. I hope to have more information about that soon so we can share it out and I'll be prepared to watch it together when it comes out next year. But it was a lot of fun to see people who knew our history, who were from, you know, a few thousand miles away and they actually bring and extended our John Brown, so that was also really cool. We got to link up that descendant with Mary Buster, who of course is kind of our honorary historian for that family in the area. So lots of fun things happening in the architectural conception of the community and we love your support in any way. Thank you.
The fire department did just this week receive our new compressor for S C B A bottles. That was something that was on the C I P for 2027, but due to the fact we were able to take advantage of a special pricing offer, we were able to bump that up and get it for about half price. That's a shared cost with the county and so we'll be working the next week to get that installed.
And I would add that that was one of the things that was on the list that the council approved when we authorized the disposal of the existing, of the old fire truck, of the old engine forty miles. It's still for sale, but ironically we're able to already sell our old compressor to an adjacent fire district. Hot Water, we have a plane, so those are still to be.
Thank you.
Tony, you're saving.
You must.
We'll move to the other chair.
Got a motion by Councilman Brad for Jurman and a second by Councilman Chastain for Jurman. All in favor?
Aye.